All right. I'll start off by reading the guess, the declaration of I don't know the exact description, but I'll just read it. As Chair of SAU 21 Joint Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order 12 per cent to executive, executive order 2020 dash 04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporously to the, to this meeting, which was authorized per cent to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing at public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the SAU 21 Joint School Board have the ability to communicate contemporously during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 929-205-6099 and password 892-069-194 or by clicking the web on the website, which was listed on the agenda of the SAU website. We are also providing public notice of this, of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for assessing the meet, accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of SAU 21 at www.sau21.org. We are providing a mechanism for the public to to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email R. Evans at sau21.org. We're adjourning the meeting. We will adjourn the meeting if public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this, this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Okay, I'm going to start doing roll call and just make sure your microphones are on for that. Aaron Stanton.
Yeah, yes, and nobody, no, nobody's in the room.
Okay. Forrest Carter. Greg Marrow. Greg Parrish.
Here, present with a family coming in and out of the room.
Greg Duffy.
Present, all alone.
Henry Marsh.
Present, alone.
Jessica Brown. Jim Keim.
Present and alone.
John Bailey.
Present and I'm currently alone, but I have an open access area in the house.
Leslie LaFond.
Present, alone.
Mark Lane. Michael Rabideau.
Present, alone.
Rebecca Burdick.
Present, alone at the moment.
Sharon Gordon. Is Sharon here?
Sorry, present and alone.
Okay. Tom Von Jess. Heidi Tarasina.
Present with people coming in and out of the room.
Jason Farias.
Present, alone.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Here, alone.
Kelly Huber.
Present and family in and out of the room.
Martin Tavichian.
Present and alone.
Nermina Peterson.
Present and alone.
And Tony Delano.
Present and alone with family potentially coming in and out.
Okay, thank you. I have the roll call.
All right. So this was a difficult day. I think as much as people were experiencing this news, given that the governor's been telegraphing it for at least a week, it's still a difficult thing when it actually happens. So I think, I think the totality of the governor's comments to, were really sobering. So, and I included that in the email that I sent you earlier. Not only did he tell us, he told us he was doing this now because he wanted us to be able to plan for not having students buildings for the remainder of the school year, but wanted us to be anticipating that that will probably be the way we will have to operate summer programs, which includes ESY and that, that he wants us to be thinking about and paying attention to what that this all means for the fall. And, you know, I, I think we've talked about some of those things on some of the board meetings, particularly those this week, but it's still rather difficult to hear. So we, we had finalized our calendar. We put out a letter a little while ago, just with this information and that calendar, which will take us through the end of the year. And as I alluded to in the letter, we, we now have a lot of work to do. We, we, we knew this work was coming, but now it's, now it's for real. I, I think one of the more important things that, that he talked about as well is this idea, not so much of a date, but more around what would the conditions be that would be necessary for reentering schools? What would school look like under those conditions? There are discussions in different parts of the country around aspects of, of that. Some of them include, most of them include things about testing. They include the ability to take people's temperature. They include the ability to social distance. They include masks. They include figuring out ways to keep, keep, keep groups of smaller sizes, whatever that number may be, all of which feel very difficult to do in school. I'm going to be honest. And, and, and add on top of that, there are some ideas being floated in other parts of the country about ways of doing that. California right now is having a pretty conversation about split sets when they and so these are the things that we're going to expect to have more conversation with the commissioner and the people in the governor's office about over the coming weeks, months. And, and we'll, we'll pay a lot of attention to, obviously. So let me, let me move on quickly before I turn this over to my, my colleagues in part. So I met today with, with a number of our town officials. There were town officials on a call with Senator Sherman and a number of our representatives from Seabrook, Hampton Falls and Hampton. I'm not sure if there was someone there, Southampton, but I know that Senator Sherman has been in touch with them. And the real Northampton was not as true, actually are in a slightly different catchment area that he meets with. And I'll be meeting with that group, I think, next week. Their conversations were about the news and where, where, what some of their estimates are right now on, on the revenue shortfall that they're expecting to experience into the summer and fall and steps that they're taking to begin to deal with those. I think I've mentioned this in a couple of board meetings. Matt and I will be talking soon with the town administrator in Seabrook about those challenges. And we've been asked to do a similar, have a similar conversation with the town administrator, acting town administrator in Northampton, and I fully expect, given that Kathleen's been asked to have that conversation in Hampton, that will be asked, invited into that conversation in Hampton as well. They, some of them are expecting, you know, lots of numbers get thrown around right now, right? I don't know what the numbers are that are real, but they're talking, some of them about 15 to 25% reduction in property tax collection in some of those communities. And again, I, I don't know where they're getting those numbers. I'm not sure they, they're real confident of those numbers, but, but those are their estimates of what they may be looking at. We have an online forum on Saturday morning. We're going to take a slightly different, a really different focus on, on this one. We've invited Raymond Pillsbury, who's done a lot of work with our staff around trauma and around stress and taking care of oneself. And he's going to be with us on Saturday morning for that forum. It's actually very good timing for that, given the news. And, and the other thing I wanted to mention that I did send out this afternoon, I hope many of you saw, is that right after the governor's announcement, the NHIAA acted to cancel all spring sports and tournaments that would have accompanied those sports. So I want to turn this over to Dr. Akili and Mr. Farrar for any comments. We haven't had a chance to touch base today. Thursday is one of the days that we, we have a lot of other meetings with a lot of other people, but I, I know that they, they share the perspective that today was a pretty difficult day when you are someone who works with kids.
Sure, I can just chime in. I mean, yeah, it's been, it's been one day, but it seems like a lot has changed in terms of just the framing of what we do and what our plans are. There's been a kind of a sobering reality today. We, so curriculum, we met with the CIA group, the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Group for the Sea Coast this morning. Everybody's talking about the same kind of things. In fact, a lot of those schools are still talking about calendars, workdays, that kind of thing. I think we're okay there. But testing, understanding, you know, what kind of gaps in learning are going to occur as a result of this? Looking at some diagnostic measures, whether, whether we're going to use local assessments, whether we're going to try to take part in kind of a larger systemic assessment approach. The NHSAA is, is looking at that. They're actually getting together a spreadsheet with all of our diagnostics to see kind of what we can consolidate on and how we can advocate for local assessments in this whole thing. SEL, Social Emotional Learning is bubbling up with everybody. Just the fact that this is, this is not only a huge event, this is a potentially traumatic event for, for our staff, for our students. And we have to be ready and put those supports in place throughout the summer and throughout and in our planning for the fall. Believe it or not, we're, we're starting to kind of refocus on curriculum. Where we've reinstituted the whole math group, the math program review. As of this morning, we've got a few meetings set up and we're going to start looking at, you know, the biggies, algebra transition, what that means for next year and that kind of thing. The last thing I just wanted to touch on is the grant situation. So good news is the, the state has extended its deadline on all of our Title II and Title IV grants, which means we have some more flexibility in terms of, of our applications, but also in terms of what they'll approve. So we're starting to look at priorities in terms of professional development. That's it for me.
Dr. Akili.
Thank you.
There you are.
I'm in the grid. I'm here. Um, so I was on a call with, with our SA21 directors today, talking about all our options, what, what, what resources we have available to us. We are on calls with the Director of the New Hampshire Bureau of Student Support two times per week, and she gives the directors of the state updates as far as how they are changing deadlines. They're not really changing deadlines as of yet. So there are, there are decisions to be made on our part of, you know, how we get paperwork signed, how we hold meetings, how we engage parents, what we can do at this point with regards to IEP meetings and eligibility. We especially want to talk about our summer programming because ESY is required in many of our kids' IEPs. So I think the governor did allude to making a final decision about summer by May 15th, but that's not an option to wait to plan until that time. In nor, under normal circumstances, we would have all of our staff hired by now. We'd have the postings, we'd have the programming, we'd know which kids are going to be there. So what we're, we're going to be doing now over the next week or two is to plan how we're going to deliver this remotely. And if by some miracle, kids can go in buildings by then, then, you know, maybe we'll, we'll have a little, you know, little cohorts are trickling in, but we're planning for ESY to be remote also at this point. The high school is still holding eighth grade transition meetings right now. So all the kids who are transitioning from the K-8 schools who have IEPs, they're holding those IEP meetings with the sending districts and the high school case manager and director to make sure that they are talking about what services make sense in ninth grade, what classes and who we need to connect them to, so they can start getting to know who their new team will be. So all of those are, are underway. Educational associates will be a part of a data governance training tomorrow morning. So that's about how they can practice safe and the privacy policies when using school issued devices and communicating with kids and families. We'll be sharing that training with all staff next week. Just a quick up, two, two other quick updates. So one is that our meals program, we've served over 10,000 meals in the past month to our community. And since we added a third route to the delivery service on Friday, it's Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. It's more streamlined, it's more efficient, and we're hearing that it's reaching more families in a more organized fashion. We have so many great staff who are helping out, two EAs on every, on, on each of the three buses and two social workers who work tirelessly to reach out to families who call in and need help with meals, picking up or delivery or Wi-Fi access. We're exploring now, I think Matt's going to talk about this a little more, but exploring how we can continue that through the summer. So the last thing I want to mention is, I want to announce that we're going to be adding a new feature to our website. So it'll be initially on the SA21 website, but we're going to have this link on all of our websites. It's a website tip line. So the Sea Coast Care Team has initiated this. We talked about this earlier in the year that we wanted to have a pathway for parents, for teachers, for anyone in the community, even students, to go onto the tip line and, and report any concerning behavior with regards to weapons, violence or assault, sexual harassment, drugs and alcohol, threats, suicide threats or, or anything else they'd like to report, and they have the option of being anonymous. We expedited this process right now because of the dramatic decline in referrals. So we, we haven't received referrals in the past three weeks, but we know that these issues have not declined. Even the governor announced, I think a couple of weeks ago, that the referrals to DCYF, the Division of Children, Youth and Families, were 50% down. Every week it's down another 50%, but we know that there are still issues with, with all of these concerning behaviors, whether it's in the home or of our students or to our students. So we want to make sure that we have a pathway for that. So we will be communicating that to our, our staff, administrators and families within a couple of days. And those are my updates. Thank you.
Mr. Farrar.
Good evening. So, so whereas I think many people are maybe somewhat deflated about being out until, you know, through the end of the school year, I'm very excited to try to continue to work with my three kids under six, under feet. I'm actually shocked that you can't hear them right now, but it's, it's a challenging situation.
Well, you need to be out of the closet first, Matt, and then we can hear them.
Right, right. That's, that's my babysitter.
Good job.
It's a, it's a lock. So back to serious business, from an operations perspective, we do continue to limit access to all of our buildings within the SAU to essential personnel only. This is in order to perform our necessary tasks, such as our school nutrition program, to prepare meals for all of our, our families within SA21, as well as to, you know, conduct any required maintenance in our buildings. So to that point, you will notice that we, we are commencing with some outdoor groundwork at our schools. So we will be allowing our facilities teams to do some limited, you know, upkeep outdoors with strict precautions as to social distancing and, and no, you know, no interactive work with multiple staff members. And then obviously we have our school nutrition workers who are working to prepare meals with the proper PPE. They are, they are wearing masks and gloves. And to that point, Caroline alluded to our plans for school nutrition. And we do plan to bring forth, I, I actually, we, we were having some discussions prior to this meeting and I, I did mention that we do plan to bring forth a proposal to continue our, our meals program as it exists in, in the current form through the summer. We'd like to provide, you know, healthy nutritious meals uninterrupted to all of our families, you know, continuously through, through to next, next year. So there's no service gap. We feel this is incredibly important service and really an essential components to, to service our community and our students. So we will be, we are gathering the estimated costs for that program. I will say that Ed Como, our, our school nutrition director at Winnicott and Abigail Kaplan, our director at Seabrook have just been, have really shown some incredible leadership with the current meals program and, and as far as bringing this forth for the summer. They're, they're really excited and their team is really excited about serving our community and our students. So we, we hope to bring forth some, some costs. And we've already been, the, the DOE, the School Nutrition Department at the DOE has already indicated that we should be eligible for reimbursement through the summer. So we are excited about that. So we don't anticipate it being a huge expense. So as I've previously reported, we did contract a professional remediation company to sanitize and disinfect all of our SA21 buildings. And again, this will occur prior to students and staff returning to school. Additionally, our human resources payroll and accounts payable are fully functional. And we are continuing our operations in this remote environment. This means we are, you know, maintaining payroll uninterrupted for all of our teachers and staff who are, who are really working hard to, to maintain this high level of educational instruction on, on a remote basis. Additionally, we are, we are paying our vendors on time and we're conducting our normal hiring process. So we, as we look forward to, to the next school year, we obviously have openings, whether it's retirements or other turnover. So we are, we are interviewing prospective candidates via video conference, and that's either on Google Meeting or Zoom. And all, all paperwork and contracts are being executed online via DocuSign, similar to how we are executing our manifest, our payroll manifest, our AP manifest and other contracts, you know, through the school boards via DocuSign, same, same system. Our technology team remains an integral part of this successful remote learning initiative. You know, I, I can't say enough what an amazing job that, that, that our, that our technology teams are doing. I mean, Jason Saul Marsh in, in particular has taken a leadership role at Winnicott and on the S, and at the SAU level, really to support all of our students, teachers and staff and ensure that we're all up and running. And, and they've also looked at different ways that we can leverage our existing technology as well as our software and subscriptions, as well as look at new available opportunities as far as technology goes to make this a successful, you know, a successful venture considering the circumstances. You know, these, I've, I've, I've just gone over a good amount of our operations team or these are non-union employees and they really work behind the scenes. So I really want to take this, this opportunity. And I've, I've taken this opportunity at every board meeting, but I can't say it enough. These, these people really are amazing and they, and they're what, what's keeping this operation going. I mean, obviously our teacher, I mean, we, we, we thank our teachers on a daily basis because they're, they're the talents. I mean, they're, they're, they're working with our students, you know, directly, one to one. But, but behind the scenes, our human resources, our payroll, our accounts payable, school nutrition, finance, our office support, our facilities and our technology teams, they all, they're all just, you know, they're, they're, they're faith, they're, they've really stepped up to the challenge. And this is a challenge remotely. So I do want to thank all of them for just doing an incredible job. So finally, from, from a financial perspective. So, so earlier today, I met with my, my colleague, my contemporaries, other business administrators on, on the southeast region. So we were, we were discussing many of, you know, many of these challenges that we're facing, you know, as, as various SAUs in this environment. You know, one of my biggest concerns, which Dr. Lupini had mentioned earlier was, was revenue. And, you know, we, we all know that there is going to be a decline in property tax receipts and the revenue that comes into towns that funds both town operations, but as far as us, our, our school operations, that'd be our operating budget, all of our warrant articles. Sorry, just went on mute to tell my kids to quiet down a little bit. My apologies.
I'd like to file a report of suspicious behavior. Matt, who do I contact for that?
Yes.
Akili, you want to take that report?
There are grounds for DCYF complaints, like my state. I'm afraid. So, so from a revenue perspective, you know, that, that, that's, you know, ultimately that falls to the town. I mean, they are legally obligated to fund the school operating budget and any associated warrant or articles. That being said, it does not mean that we should just ignore the, 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 these revenue shortfalls in our various communities. So, so what that, what, what that means is that we, you know, we should be cognizant of how we're spending our, 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 our operating budget and our funds. You know, oftentimes year, year end, if we have any unexpended funds, we may look at, you know, various, you know, investments that we could potentially, you know, utilize those funds with. So those, those are the type of, those are the type of expenditures that we may want to hold off on in order to return those funds to the town. Now, obviously that's a board by board decision. However, I do, I do want to just let you all know as a joint board that that is something that we, we, we really should be cognizant of and we should, you know, try to work as a community with the town to make certain that we, all of our towns are fiscally stable in this type, in this type of environment. Additionally, this will affect our budget process going into the next school year. So 2021, 2022, this fall, when we're looking at, at proposing budgets and warrant articles and, you know, and we, we're asking our communities for support and to, and to, you know, pass our budgets. We, we should, we should be careful that we are, we are conservative and we, we are not asking too much from a, from communities that and we are, we are not asking too much from a, from communities that are, that are most likely based on the current situation are going to be very stressed. You know, there's going to be, there's a lot of families that are, that are going to be under financial, real, real financial, you know, stressors and are struggling. And that applies, and that translates to the town's finances. So I just want to, to put that out there that we, this is something that, you know, although may not be a direct effect as far as our, our financing, we do need to be aware of it and we do need, and it is our best interest to work with the towns to make certain that we are, you know, that our communities are fiscally sound. So that being said, you know, due to this remote environment, we have incurred extra costs. So this includes, you know, the disinfecting and sanitizing of our schools, providing free meals for all students, the aforementioned technology investments. That includes internet hotspots or some subscriptions and other software. That being said, we, we are, I mean, you all know that the federal government is providing stimulus funds via the CARE Act. We, we have, we have received guidance that it should be in line with approximately 80 to 85% of Title I funding that we currently receive. We do not have an exact number on that yet, but that is the general guidance of funds that we should receive. Additionally, we do anticipate that we, we, we could see some FEMA funds or other state funding in, in relation to, to this crisis. So, so we're fairly confident that for this, not fairly, we're very confident that for this current school year, 2019, 2020, you know, that, that we, we will be able to cover all our costs that have been incurred. As you know, on the Converse side, we're, we're recognizing savings. So, you know, electricity, heating fuels, supplies, transportation costs, those are all accounts that we're saving some significant funds and. So, for example, when I, when we, when I met earlier today, I kind of did a straw poll on transportation. And, you know, across the state, you know, most school districts are paying, are continuing to pay their transportation costs at between 8% and 20% discount. The intent is to retain drivers for, for reentry. This is, this is incredibly important considering the, the driver shortage. That being said, we, we are paying at a 50% discount, just which is essentially the driver cost. So our agreement that we struck with first student was we will, we will pay that percentage based on a, an agreement that, well, with the contingency that they will retain every single driver and pay them their full compensation. So essentially, we're paying the cost of our drivers. Not only is this important for us to retain our current drivers, additionally, these, these drivers are all community members. So it is, there is, there is that component where we, you know, from a community perspective, we want to make sure that we, we are supportive of the community. But the other very important, other, the last final component of that, which is very important, is as part of the CARE Act, it does stipulate that we, that we maintain payments of, of our contractors, our employees and our, our contractors' salaries in order to receive those funds. So we feel that we're satisfying all of those requirements and, and doing best by our community. And, and we, and we're actually a little more aggressive than, than as far as a discount versus the rest of the, the rest of the state. That applies to our special education, transportation as well. So now that we know our, our final, or the, that the school will not resume this year, at this point, we can go back and we can take a look at, at all these expenditures and then all these savings. And I hope to have an estimated year-end estimate or expenditure for each individual school district at the May school board meeting. So I, I intend to report back how we, how we should end the school year at our May board meeting and, and go from there. And, and like I said, we do continue, we are continuing to, to monitor these potential revenue and funding sources. And, and hopefully we'll have some more information as to exact costs in May. So that is it from the finance and operations side.
Thanks, Matt.
And the kids in the background, which I, I can hardly hear myself think, so I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Three quick things. One of them, along with what Matt just said, that just a reminder that, of what I said upfront, which is that we're going to be meeting with a number of those town administrators to start those conversations. I want to mention graduations, both at the high school and for eighth grade. As Prince, as boards heard this week in the meetings, the three meetings that we had this week, principals are working at the high school with the senior class, senior advisors. And at your elementary schools, people who have eighth graders are working with, with class advisors, et cetera, to, to start to put together plans. I think the motto that we've adopted is that no, no idea is too crazy right now for what we might do to celebrate kids in this remote environment. And just one set of numbers along with something Dr. Kellyan gave you. On the first day that we served meals, which was March 18th, we had 143 students, individual students who took meals. And as of Wednesday, as of yesterday, we had 297 students who took meals. So we've doubled in that, in that one month period. And all the time, we're hearing stories about people who are wanting to access the meals, who didn't think they would need to do that at the beginning of this. So that need is, is real and it's open to anyone, not just free and reduced lunch. So if there's any questions you have on any of those issues that were brought up or anything else, we'd love to try to answer them.
Bill, Greg Parrish, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, are conversations taking place regarding the incoming freshmen and the various programs that we go through to introduce them and begin that transition from eighth grade to the high school? Have you guys had a chance to have those conversations or any thoughts?
I, I know in my individuals with Bill, they've talked about what they can do to replicate those experiences and, and those conversations are different depending on the different experiences. I don't have any hard information on that. But, but that's been our conversation, that, that they're trying to figure out ways to replicate those experiences as best they can.
From a programmatic standpoint, I know that wasn't the nature of your question, but we are looking at those called confirmation tests for world language as well as for algebra to see if we can move those in some sort of fashion online. I don't have valid answers for you, though.
Okay. Matt, I have a question for you. Have you had an opportunity to review any of the summer projects that are, have been, well, have been planned in each district to see which ones can be tabled this year?
Well, the Hampton Falls voters decided we're not doing the paving project.
This is true.
We, we are proceeding with the expectation that we will, that we will still complete all summer projects. So all, so our exterior projects, we have, we have already done walkthroughs. We've done the RFPs. The one, the one question mark is the interior projects because although we had the RFPs ready, we can't do, we were holding off on walkthroughs until we allow people in the building. You know, so that's something we're going to have to, you know, as we get more guidance from the CDC and from the state, we'll have to determine when we can allow that to occur. But I am hopeful that, you know, even if we have to take some mitigation precautions and require people to wear masks and maybe, maybe do individual walkthroughs, that we will get those done and, and get, and get them ready so that we're, we get all those projects done. But I, I certainly hope that we were able to complete all, all projects that are either done in the summer or will be done, prepared in the summer to be done in the fall.
I have a question in regards to, at the end of the year, I know that Seabrook usually gives out scholarships, town scholarships, and somebody had asked me, you usually have a ceremony for the freshmen going into high school, no, the high school graduating. Do you know if they're going to have, would these scholarships be mailed out to the students versus having a ceremony?
Yeah, so it's a great question. So the high schools still talking about how they're going to put together what, what's normally known as scholarship night, how that'll, how that'll be done, whether it's going to be done remotely or, or, or in some other fashion. I, I think they're committed to trying to do something to make sure kids get honored. That's sort of been the, been the mantra. And, and I'll answer the question from, you know, that's another important part of, of, of eighth grade ceremonies is that a number of your eighth grade ceremonies have students honored with certain recognitions. And I know the principals are committed to trying to replicate those as best they can in whatever they do.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the testing for the languages and the math. So, I mean, do you think that the kids are going to be where they should be in the curriculum right now to, to take those tests?
No, no, I don't think. Just, we're not going to make that a punitive situation. If that's where you're going with it.
Or, yeah, okay.
That's a, that's a really good question and we've, we've already kind of figured that.
Do you still want them to take the testing? Because you said you were going to try to get it so they would go online.
Right, so I think, I think one of the things that we're going to be looking at is to take a posture of diagnostic on these, on these assessments just to see what we're missing, where we're missing. As opposed to something that's, you know, traditionally used as something that puts them into a particular level.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
David, it's Greg Parrish. Do you feel that a certain part of the beginning of next year will be getting these kids caught up where they should be for the first of the, for, for the beginning of that year? And if so, how many weeks do you think you're looking at?
I, I can't give you the calendar, but most certainly, this is going to be a situation where we're going to have to assess where kids are when they come in the door. You know, they literally left projects half-done.
Right.
And they're, now they're moving sometimes into different grades, sometimes into different schools. And, and we're just going to, we're going to need to account for that in every way possible while keeping sense, the sense that, you know, this has been such a huge event that's had social implications. There might need to be some element where we actually just revisit what we were doing, you know, when we left, whether that be curriculally or whether that just be, you know, getting in touch face-to-face with your former class. Yeah, those, those ideas are on the table.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question, if I might. This is Heidi. And my question is, and I'm not quite sure who this might go to, but my question is, and this is for all ages of students. Obviously now with the new news, that could change the morale quite a bit. And just curious what, how, moving forward, how we're going to keep motivation there for the students to finish the year out? I mean, that's going to be really tough. Any ideas?
Well, let me, let me say this because there's another group that wasn't expressly stated in your question, but it is part of that equation, and that's our staff. So we know everything you just said is true about our staff. And so we, we began those conversations earlier this week. It's why we brought Raymond in to our conversations to talk about what that might look like. And starting with this forum on Saturday, which is really as much for families as it is for staff around the issues that you laid out, we're, we're starting sort of a concerted effort over the course of the next week to focus on them and their motivation and their morale and their wellbeing. And which, which I know you would agree is a big part of, of our students, right? And, and their morale. So, so that's been the discussion so far, but Caroline, you may, with Raymond, have had other pieces of this conversation as well?
Yes, we, we want to address social emotional levels of, of all the groups in different creative ways. So it kind of goes beyond the, the level of just like, you know, practice self-care. You know, it's deeper than that. It's, it's everywhere. It's, you know, as a, as an educator, it's part of our work. And then you go home and it's part of your family. And it's even part of like how you grocery shop. It determines the future. Like, it's not just, you know, something that's happening at school or something that's happening at home. It's our entire reality and community. So we realize that this is potentially taking a toll on people. So for students, it can look like starting to avoid, starting to get burned out, starting to, you know, like the honeymoon's over of that you're at home and you get to just be on your Chromebook. So teachers are doing a phenomenal job with regards to kids. They're doing a phenomenal job of being available to kids, of keeping it creative for kids and making it fun for kids. There's some really fun things going on to keep kids laughing and involved in the things that they really love doing. You're encouraging kids to, you know, get outside, stay engaged in their hobbies, what makes them happy. So it's, so it's keeping the students, the whole child in mind, not only the, you know, the academics. So there's that piece. And then for teachers, you know, we are constantly thinking about each direction the teacher is pulled because many of our teachers are parents. Our teachers are, are home teaching kids and they're teaching their own kids. And, you know, they still have professional responsibilities. So we're, you know, when we have this parent forum on Saturday, we're going to be encouraging teachers to talk to each other. You know, like be, be in a place where it's okay, like we're in acceptance now. It's okay to not love this. It's okay to say, you know what, this isn't my comfort zone. This isn't what I signed up for. This isn't best practice. But we are going to do everything we possibly can for kids. So teachers put pressure on themselves and we, we want to acknowledge that, you know, they're doing a fantastic job and they, they do need to take care of themselves. So, and part of that is talking to each other. It's okay to talk to each other and say, excuse me, I'm having some feelings. You know, we don't have to be the hero and the tough guy all the time. It's okay. We need to do those and lean on each other. So that's going to be a big theme of, of what Saturday is going to be all about.
And I think that's a wonderful idea and you're definitely, it sounds like you're heading in the right direction. So thank you for addressing that and.
Thanks.
Caroline, it's Greg, Greg Parrish. I'm very concerned about the staff. I know they're putting in a lot of energy for our kids. You know, I'm concerned that they have that same amount or at least some energy left for their own families. Are, are you seeing anything? Are you hearing anything? You know, because they are vital to, to our children, but they, they do have their own families to worry about.
We hear, yes, we hear that people are, and I mean, we don't even have to hear it, we see it, right? You see little guests pop in and out of all our little Zooms here. We know that they're pulled in different directions. So I think that the administrators have done a great job in saying, you know what? It's about quality. It's not about quantity. It's about care, not necessarily content. About care, not necessarily content. So, you know, when we say have, have your office hours posted or have an opportunity for students to, to connect with you each week, that might be like, oh, Google Meet for three hours, you know, office hours on Mondays. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays are activity time. And I'm just keeping a variety so that teachers can, you know, they can have, you know, it's not just like sitting in front of a screen for six hours a day or five days a week, you know? So administrators are really getting that out there. And in Dr. Lupini's letters, every time, less is more. You know, we know, even if a teacher is like trying to kill themselves working all day, the students need a break. So it's not going to help anybody to, to put that much pressure on yourself. So I think that's, that is a theme that we've had, but we're really going to make it a theme going forward because we knew this new announcement was going to be a reality that's, that's setting in about, you know, for the next whatever, you know, seven weeks.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. I think the new challenges are going to begin when the reality sets in. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
But Dr. Lupini, do you feel at this point, I know the teachers have heard from the administrators, from the office staff, but isn't it time that the school boards would send a letter of thanks to the, to the teachers? Because they've heard from their bosses, but they haven't heard from the school boards to say, thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing. And if it's done on an individual school board basis, the North Hampton School Board to North Hampton, Hampton Falls to their, to their staff, and the same thing with Winter Connet, that it's a little different than their bosses.
Well, I don't know that it's different or not, Henry, but the answer to your question is yes. That would be very well appreciated. You know, I'll, I'll call out Hampton Falls, who did that early, early on. Greg and members of the board wrote a, a letter to, to the teachers and got, it, it was a, it was a wonderful letter. And, and.
I think Winter Connet's vice chair would be excellent at composing that letter.
So we'd love, we're absolutely, we're absolutely there to help you with that. So yes, I think it's a great idea.
Because.
Henry, it's all set.
Thank you. But I, I think that it, it then becomes putting the school board as, as appreciative of all the work as well as, you know, they've heard from a lot of people. And, but that's the one group that hasn't really been vocal, whether it goes out on a, any of the social medias and things that, but I think that would help, just morale a little bit.
Well, we, we have a conference in each of the buildings and we're happy to help you get it out through that conference. Absolutely, that's what, that's what Hampton Falls did. And it was very well received, very well received.
Hey, just jumping off of that, just thinking, the same way that the teachers are needing to balance helping their kids and teaching at the same time, the rest of the parents are needing to do work and help teach. And we may in fact want to say thank you to the parents as well because they're, this is new for them too.
Yep.
Henry, this is Greg Parish. We did do a letter a few weeks ago to, to Bill's comment and it, I received some really nice notes back. And I do think it certainly helped with the morale a little bit.
Thank you, Greg.
Matt, this is John Bailey, I got a question for you. Just getting back to the theme of being as financially conservative as possible for the towns. What are our options and limitations in terms of funding the trusts at the end of the year? We typically take excess revenue or excess funds and fund some of those trusts. Are there, is it possible not to do that this year? Or were the townspeople already voted that in, is that not an option?
Yeah, that's not an option. Now that it's, it's voted in, it's legally obligated. If, if the funds are there, it needs to fund those, those trusts.
Okay.
Just like the towns legally obligated to provide us with the funds that the town voted to fund the operating budget. It's not like we can say, oh, just give us, you know, ninety percent of what we asked, what was voted for. They legally need to provide us with all those, with those funds.
Okay, no, I, I get it, I just didn't know if that was an option or not.
No, it's a good question.
Matt, do they, is there an RSA that stipulates whether the town funds the school or themselves first or second, however that plays out? Or is there anything, any kind of language like that, or how does that work?
Well, I don't think it's a matter of priority. I mean, it's, it's, they, they, their obligation is to provide the school with the funding. And then what they do is, I mean, that's why towns have a, a reserve. So they, so you know, like us, we can't maintain a balance, we need to return funds every year.
Right.
The town keeps any excess balance. So that's, that's part of the reason why they're allowed to do that is in the event of this type of situation, any sort of shortfall, they have that. And, and actually, there's, they, they're, I believe there's a threshold that they need to maintain a certain percentage in the event of situations like this. Additionally, what they, what they do is they, you know, which is very commonplace, is they would bond any, any shortfall. So it would be, it's a, it's called a TAN, it's, it's a temporary. So, so it's, so any, it's anticipated taxes that they, that they, that they should receive. They can bond for that temporary period of time.
Thank you.
So ultimately, it's the towns, it's something the town needs to deal with. I'm just suggesting that as, you know, as community members and as partners with the town, that we just need to be cognizant of the, the struggle that they are going to encounter because it's not going to be easy for them, so.
I mean, the good news is we're in, you know, we, we have collective bargaining agreements. I mean, I'm looking around at a couple of towns, including one that our high school sits in that does not have a collective bargaining agreement because it didn't pass this, this spring. And their conversation now is about whether they'll ever be able to get a collective bargaining agreement passed in the near future. So we're very, very lucky in that regard, that we're, that we're going into this with collective bargaining agreements in place.
And, and pretty long, fairly long-term collective bargaining agreements because.
Three and four years.
This isn't a one-year issue. I mean, we saw the ramifications from 2008. It wasn't, it wasn't like in 2010, we were up, our economy was up and running. I mean, we, this, this will have, this will be likely, the, who knows? What, what shape is the recovery? Is it the U, is it the V, is it an L, is it a W? But we will, will likely be feeling it in some fashion over the next few years.
Anything else? All right, Jim, thank you. I don't know where Jim is, I don't see Jim there, but.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is, okay. So, thank you. And again, if you can join us on Saturday morning, that would be great. I think that's going to be a great session. And I think we have this scheduled again for next week.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.